So, welcome to Lewiston, the second largest city in Maine, but the city with the biggest heart. And we are here for a budget workshop. So, I'll let Heather and Ed take it away.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Please join me for the --
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, you can take it away.
Okay. So, you had, on Tuesday night, I had passed out a packet of information. We have one replacement page that I passed out. We have some chart of comparable tax rates. And then, the only other thing that I know of that we need to go through is the non-personnel new program and services. So, kind of starting with the packet that I provided Tuesday night, there's a series of adjustments that were --
Is that this one?
Yes, that were proposed. So, as a reminder, the current fiscal year FY19's tax rate is 28.67. The initial budget presentation provided by the city administrator was $29.52. Going down through the adjustments, we have proposals to increase revenue by $228,100. And the two, or the two or three biggest components are, when we prepared the initial budget presentation, or the budget document, we didn't have even an estimate for the current state revenue sharing, let alone the potential for the additional half a percent. So, these are revised state revenue sharing numbers, so it allows us to book another $70,000. We are looking at excise tax again, and we're bumping that by $100,000. They're still coming in, fast and furious registering cars, so. MDEA has agreed to pay, they're currently paying for a portion of cleaning right now at the Armory. If they move over to the violations bureau, they are willing to continue paying a portion of cleaning, so the $3,100 represents that portion that they would be paying as tenants in the building. And then, based upon what we are seeing for short-term rates and the increase in the percentage, we are looking at investment earnings increasing by $55,000.
Can I ask one question?
Yep.
So, just remind me, currently, revenue sharing, is that 2%?
Yes.
Okay.
This does not include the extra half a percent.
Okay. And that extra half a percent is only $70,000?
725 or thereabouts.
So, you are looking at the first page.
Yes.
The $70,000 is status quo.
Two percent.
What we anticipate seeing, because when we prepared the budget, we didn't have estimates from the state yet.
Okay.
So, this reflects that.
Okay.
When you get to the second page, that's if we include the additional half a percent.
Okay, great.
Yes. So, continuing on the first page, you will see there is a list of possible expenditure adjustments. And in this case, normally, we do not have so many add backs, but this year, we seem to have a lot of add backs. So, anything that is a negative number, we are actually increasing the budget by that. Anything that's a positive number is an actual budget cut. So, talking to the city administrator and I, we are looking at eliminating the assistant fire chief and the planner, but you will see they are added back down below, so you can see the impact of all the potential positions.
One of all the new positions.
That way, they're all grouped together, kind of handled the same way. So, you will see, we get to take over Martell School July 1st, so you will see there's $12,000 as --
October.
Probably going to be October.
Okay. So, still, we have $12,000 that we are probably going to have to pay in utilities, occupancy, something, so we have a place holder there. So, again, that's the add back. The chief of police, because I know they're both sitting behind me, the chief of police had indicated, I think during his budget discussion, that the main computer crimes task force grant was not renewed, so that salary that was paid for by the grant is now on the general fund in the tune of $64,438. RHS, that's our retirement health savings, based upon the final calculation. The timing between the budget document and then the snapshot within the contracts did not work very well this year, so we needed a final estimate of, so that increased by $20,000. You will see, and we discussed this as far as when we presented the 911 budget, there were two adjustments in the 911 budget for this, this year being FY19. The first was the City of Auburn reduced the 911 budget late after we had already adopted our budget. So, they had reduced that, or our portion of that was $10,735. Additionally, we had budgeted interest for the radio project, or for the first phase of the radio project on 911. Subsequent to that budgeting, the city managers got together and agreed that each city would host that debt service on our side. So, they are returning another $20,445 to that. So, the total is that $31,180. That I'm going to carry forward to next year's budget, so we can take that credit in next year. It will spike again in FY21, but it kind of relieves FY20. Part of the rental registration program, you will see in a couple different places, based upon conversations at the council level, where we're including the two positions, we are looking at the tablets for code enforcement. So, you will see here, there's a $3,060 increase to reflect the data line requirement for the tablets and code enforcement. We also, and this is bolded, have the $53,747 if Auburn goes to full service in the transit, this is our portion of that. So, it is, that piece is already include that, included in there.
Do we know when that shows up on their agenda?
I can't.
Are we budget right now?
They are having their preliminary discussion, I think, the 29th of this month.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, after that bolded line, pretty much all of the rest of the adjustments were either realigning estimates, kind of wiggling things around a little bit, looking at charging some of the condemnation 80K legal fees to the acquisition demolition account, since we're not demolishing as many buildings, doing some adjustments with current surpluses in the current year to carry forward, so we can reduce next year's budget. So, that pretty much follows the line all the way through there. I will note, on line 30, we have just shy of a $12,000 adjustment. That's refining the interest rate on the bond sale. Right now, and I'm working with the financial advisor, there is the possibility for every month we delay the bond sale, we can pick up some money from the interest that we are saving. So, that is an option as we're getting down to some final elements, maybe we can use that to balance that out. So, the total of all the expenditure adjustments is $201,838. So, between the two, and this excludes the school tax rate increase. This is just looking at the city side and the total. So, we have the net tax impact of $429,938. We have the city portion of the tax rate going from the initial budget of $17.38 to seven, down to $17.16. And then, the overall tax rate is 29.30. So, when we get to the summary, which is what I just passed out, we'll kind of put it all together.
Can I ask one question?
Yep.
On line number 20, what does PS stand for?
Public safety.
Great, thank you.
So, after you get to that point, and we're looking at a potential tax rate of $29.30, excluding the school, we are now looking at the, all of the positions that the council kind of yayed or nayed and voted on. So, what we did is took all positions that had at least a five council vote at the time when we went through them, and incorporated them and said, okay, when do you really need this position to start, those types of things. So, you will see down below the impact of all of that. So, those are the positions that you had, again, had five votes for, and when we are proposing their start time. And you will see, if we do all of those positions with the start times indicated, it's going to cost us $378,852, bringing the tax rate back up to $29.49, excluding the school.
There will be some slight differences between Heather's numbers and the numbers on my chart because of rounding.
Of course, the pennies.
The 29.49, that's not excluding the schools.
Yes, that includes the school share, but not their 16 cents.
Not the increase that I saw the other night, right?
Correct.
Can I, can I ask why?
Just because I wanted to focus only on the city.
Okay, thank you.
Only on the city right now, to get that piece in line.
That checks, thank you.
So, the second page, and I'm not, it's kind of a little frustrating to look at it, it's more of a wishful thinking. This is what the impact would be if we got the additional half a percent for revenue sharing. That would provide us an additional revenue of $725,000 estimated at this point in time. So, you will see the tax rate goes from 20, bottom line tax rate, all in, goes from 29.49 to 29.13.
Without the additional school?
Without the additional school.
Forty-six cents.
Sixty-six cents.
Oh, yes.
Yes. So, at this point, it may be worthwhile to take a look at the spreadsheet that the city administrator prepared, because that kind of puts it all together.
Does the 29.13, does that take the homestead exemption into consideration? If that's --
Yes.
Yes.
At existing level.
Does anybody want to do this? Do you want to do this, concern?
Well, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. The top chart is without the school tax increase. So, the first one there, fiscal year 20 admin proposed, that was the numbers that came out in the original administrator's proposed budget. The next column, fiscal year 20 line items adjusted, that takes, makes the adjustment for all of the line items that Heather went through, that first set of items on the first page of her sheet. And then, the fiscal year 20 adjusted plus the new positions includes both the line item adjustments and the new positions. So, as you can see, the tax rate originally was 29.52. With the adjustments, that goes down to 29.30, the line items changes, and restoring those positions, or putting those positions in, takes it up to 29.49. Roughly speaking, if we got that additional revenue sharing, that's about 36 cents on the tax rate.
Yes.
So, it would reduce all of those numbers by roughly 36 cents. The bottom half just simply shows the same information with the additional 16 cent increase for the schools that was requested, there's, in what, in the budget they approved.
Sorry, can you say that 36 cents decrease again? What was that?
If we get the additional half a percent in revenue sharing.
Okay. But that's, that's already included on here.
No.
It's not. Okay. So, when I'm looking at this, and I see that our current tax rate is 28.67, and all-in down here, with the adjusted positions and the 16 cent school increase, the 29.65, I see a total increase of 98 cents on the tax rate. So, you're saying I can take, if we were to get the additional half a percent, I can take 36 cents off of that?
Correct.
Yes. And I can actually redo this and put another line in underneath with, with revenue sharing, so that you can see the actual numbers. I should have thought of that when I was doing that today.
Yeah.
So, that gets us to 62 cents, which is a little high for me.
So, the second, I guess, phase of the discussion talks about the capital component, which is fund balance, so that would not impact the tax rate. So, Madam Mayor, I don't know if you want to have a discussion about refining these adjustments a little bit more before we get to the fund balance piece?
Well, so, I guess before we do that, my one question is, everything that we can take, that we can pay from fund balance has been taken off of these first two pages, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I guess I would ask the council how they want to do this. Do we want to talk about revising the first two sheets first, or do we want to have a conversation about fund balance items first? Does anyone have a council?
I guess the conversation, since it'll be more informative than interactive, because interactive could just take all night.
Sure.
First, I need the first two sheets.
Okay. Do you have extra copies of this?
Oh, you did.
Don't have it everywhere in my papers.
It's okay.
Kathy?
We'll go for sure.
Yeah.
Who wants it to be more informative?
Maybe I did.
For this?
I don't know. Thank you.
Welcome. Let me have another set here.
What would you prefer, Heather? Would you like to move to fund balance, or would you like to stay?
It is at the pleasure of the council.
Counselor Ray.
I would like to talk about what's going to impact the tax rate.
The first two pages, okay, sounds good.
Move along.
Great.
Do you want to get away? So, I agree with the mayor, I, yeah, that's an uncomfortable amount, the 62 cents proposed increase. I don't yet have ideas on how to fix that, but I'll just say that's a bit too high.
So, the, in looking at the list, the only ways to fix that, right, are positions.
Correct.
Okay. So, we need to have a brass tax conversation about which positions we're going to fund and which ones we're not going to fund if others are uncomfortable with 62 cents. Counselor Markcott.
I would agree with the 62 cent comment, it's been made twice here, but looking at, from a numerical perspective, that 62 cents is close to the second item on your tax rate option summary, the 29.30, one penny different. And that gets us to 2.2, which --
I'm sorry, are you looking at this?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So, if we're uncomfortable with the total of 62 cents, is it the total, or is it, no, just city versus school?
That 62 cents would be the total of city and school, less the additional revenue sharing.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So, if we're uncomfortable with 62, we need to get below the 29, 29, which equates to 2.2 percent increase. Looking at the 2.2, I don't necessarily have a problem with that.
So, 2.2 equates to $29.29, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
In order to get there, well, we can't be adding any of the positions, and we have to have an expectation of the school department to be flat funded at 10.68, which is a rugged road to, to drive down. I would be happy at the 62 cents, if we could get there. That means 2.2 percent, and as we saw in an email, the rate of increase to Social Security recipients in January was 2.8 percent. And it would be nice to make up a little bit on past years where their rates did not match what we increased.
So, I just want to make sure that I'm hearing you correctly. So, you're, because the, so the 62 cents is, is workable for you?
As much as --
Because it falls within the --
As much as I would like to come in below the 62 cents, I'm not sure how we're going to get there.
Right, exactly. Okay.
One, one quick clarification, that 62 cents was off of the 16 cent school tax increase section of the chart, plus the line items and the adjusted positions, less the, less the additional revenue sharing. So, we took a credit for 36 cents for revenue sharing, which isn't guaranteed. If you did a similar thing up there, the number for, for the tax rate for the fiscal year 20, line items adjusted, no school tax increase section, would be 28.04?
That's what I'm looking at right now.
So, if that revenue sharing, if that revenue sharing comes through, you do have a little bit of potential funding for other purposes. And my guess is that there's probably a better than 50/50 chance that that funding will come through, but it's not obviously guaranteed until the state budget's adopted.
And to get to the 62 cents, we're banking on getting that extra half a percent.
Only if we funded everything, including the schools. All, all of the additional positions plus the 16 cents for the schools. Yeah.
But to Counselor Markcott's point, and I think it'll help you, Madam Mayor, if we're looking at the 62 cents right now, his point is if we can't bake on the extra revenue sharing, we are at, actually, at 63 cents technically, but we'll work on the penny.
We find that penny.
We'll refine that penny. So, we are looking at essentially doing all adjustments, 1 through 34, on the city side.
Yep.
And we are holding the school flat on their taxes. And that's a 62 cent increase without the additional revenue sharing.
Yes, yes.
That's no new positions, that's removing, just to be super clear, that's removing the assistant fire chief and the planner, too.
Yes.
Just to be super clear.
For what, for a movement?
No, they're included.
You have to be part of, it's, it's on the first page of the adjustment. So, to get to that 62 cents, that would be what we were looking at.
Yes. I will say that I feel fairly confident that we are going to get that additional half a percent that we have not, I mean, I think that you would probably agree with that.
Yes. If I had to give it a percentage, I'd probably say 75 percent.
Because I don't feel like appropriations is going to go in there and say, take away from that. I mean, that just doesn't make a lot of sense. Okay. The, the, the other question I had was when Phil was giving his presentation the other night, it sounded like there was some possibility for them to get additional state funding based upon --
Yes.
So, there's also a possibility that we'll approve this, and then it is written into warrant that if they get additional funding, it goes back to reduced property taxes.
That's correct. That's how they are proposing to write their warrant. I think it's about 113 --
114.
114,000.
It could come this year, or it could be an adjustment for next year, I'm very uncertain. But anything that comes back will be tax relief.
And, and just so you all know, that's pretty much what we would do on, on our side in terms of revenue sharing. We would write our budget resolved, that that would, if that additional revenue sharing money comes in.
Like if we got 3% instead of 2.5%?
Right. It would, it would, well, no, even if we get the two, even if we get the 2.5%, I would write that in as a reduction to the, the extra half a percent as a reduction to the tax rate.
Because that budget gets approved after we've approved our budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Or adding the position, or adding, we could also be adding positions at the same time, too, if they don't elect to --
That would be, yeah, that would be another possibility.
The other, the other way you can look at doing that is, let's say, we can write it as not, as any combination, that if we get the half a percent, it's the 725,000. The council in the budget order can elect to say, if we get that money, we can fund XYZ position at this amount, and the balance, or the whole thing, could go to positions, or the balance could go to reducing the tax rate. So, that, that would kind of be a compromise.
It would be a contingent budget, yes.
Exactly.
I mean, my preference, just to keep it simple, would be to say, it'd be for us to budget the positions, and then say, when we get that additional half a percent, it goes to reduce the tax rate. I mean, I feel like that's easier for voters to understand.
That's correct. It would, it is easier for them to see the impact of getting, or not getting, that revenue sharing fund that way.
Right. Other questions or comments from the council?
Not sure what we're at on this.
I mean, I, I'm in agreement with you.
So, I guess the question is, how would you like to see the budget order? Do you want to, the, the way that I understand you, Madam Mayor, we are showing the entire increase in the budget order, and I assume we are showing the entire increase with all the positions listed, with the, a whereas showing any additional, the 725 would be to reduce the tax rate.
Yes, because we can't, we can't build into the budget money that we don't have.
I would agree with that. But you would be building in all of the positions regardless of whether you got the money or not by doing that. I just want to be perfectly clear.
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I feel comfortable enough that we're going to get that half a percent to do that. I understand that others may not.
Okay. And that's kind of what I'm trying to, fluctuate here.
So, people. Counselor Lyson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pris, apologize for being late today, tonight. But could you go over the list of positions that, that would include?
It's right here at the bottom.
Was it handed out tonight, or is it?
No, it was the handout that you did on Tuesday.
Okay.
So, the positions that we're including are lines 35 through 43. It includes the city clerk position, it includes a fire prospector, inspector, it includes two patrol officers with different start times, it includes the 25% of the fourth school resource officer, it includes a senior accountant, a mechanic, an assistant fire chief, and a planner, with those start dates, or staggered start dates as noted.
And, and what, that cost is like 378,000?
Correct.
And the expected 0.5% would be 725?
Correct.
So, with funding of these positions, assuming we get the other 5%, the rest of that money, then would be dedicated toward tax reduction.
Goes to pay for these other things at the top.
So, Counselor Lyson, if you look at the second sheet?
Yeah.
If we budget now, think of it this way, and then, if we budget now and do not everything, all in, ignoring the school for now, our tax rate would be 29.49, if we include all positions. If we get the additional revenue sharing, it drops that down to 29.13, which is the second page.
All the way down at the bottom.
All the way down at the bottom.
Got it.
Again, you're going to be adding 16 cents if the council approves the school budget as presented.
And that's what brings us to the 62 cents.
Correct.
Getting a clearer picture, looking at the second page and how math has worked.
Sorry, Counselor Markcott, were you all set, Counselor Lyson?
Um, I'm a little, little unclear where we're getting 62 from.
So, if you look at this sheet? So if you look at this sheet. It was passed out tonight prior to your.
I got a lot of cuts.
Jim, if you, if you go to the bottom chart that says sixteen cent school tax increase, you go all the way over to the right, fiscal year twenty, it just adjusted, which is the line item cuts we went over on our side, plus our new positions, you end up with a tax rate of twenty-nine sixty-five. If you then take credit for the revenue sharing, you can reduce that by thirty-six cents, which, which gets you down to the sixty-two cent increase.
Oh, sixty-two cent increase?
Yes.
Twenty and sixty-two, okay. Thank you. That explains that.
Are you all set?
Mm-hmm.
So, Councilor Petten Gill, how does he end up in that? I'll go to you. Councilor Petten Gill?
I just say I'm definitely in the camp that it, it's a bit high. I agree. I don't have the answer to do it. But as far as the revenue sharing, I'd rather build it lean and not anticipate that. And then if it does happen, you know, hurrah, yay, we get it. But things work in weird ways at the state, so I'd, I'd rather not anticipate it and, you know, build it that way.
So in the warrant, say, if we get the additional half percent, here are the things we're gonna build back in?
Yeah.
And you felt, if I may, that was, the voters would have a difficult time interpreting that as opposed to funding.
To me, it just seems, I've never seen it done that way, I guess. I mean, I don't, where we've said exactly which things we're gonna build back in if we get a certain amount of money. I mean, if only, I've seen it written in the way that the school department has done it, which says, this will go back to decrease the property tax rate. I'm not opposed to it, I just haven't seen it done that way before. Councilor, were you all set?
May I?
Councilor Markop?
Going back to the sixty-two cents and not really being comfortable with it, and having a better understanding now as to where we'd be if we got the extra half a percent from revenue sharing, we'd be at the sixty-two cents.
Right.
And going back to the discussion we had at previous workshops, and looking at the additional positions, I'm still not in favor of the assistant fire chief or the planner. From the sake of school safety, I guess I could sign on to the fourth school resource officer, I guess the R is missing.
Oops.
And potentially one patrol officer. That decreases the sixty-two cents a little bit, not sure how much. But if we don't get the extra revenue sharing, and it, and if we don't get it in its entirety, that's thirty-six cents added, boom.
So can I ask you a clarifying question? So if we were to take those out of what we're, what we, what we approve initially, those four positions, or the, one of the patrol officers, the assistant fire chief, and the planners, those were the three, right?
Yeah.
So if we took those out of the initial budget that we settle on, and then put in the warrant that we would add those back in if we got additional revenue sharing, are you comfortable with that?
No, I'm saying, even if we got the additional revenue.
You still wouldn't be in favor of those positions?
I wouldn't be in favor of those three positions.
Okay.
And if we didn't get the additional revenue sharing, then it would be ouch. On the sixty-two cents, it'd be well above sixty-two cents.
Right.
Irregardless of which positions get funded, which ones don't.
Councilor Lyson?
Yeah, I, I, we did kind of a straw poll, and if I missed that discussion, I'm sorry. But I thought, I mean, I would definitely agree with everything that Councilor Markop mentioned, except the planner. I think the planner is a, is a deal breaker for me. I mean, we had that in the regular budget, we wanted to carry it over from last year, we've got some new programs that we want, need implemented, including the conference of plan. I just think that's a critical position. Again, I'm, I, I could drop a patrol officer, and I could drop the assistant fire chief position as well.
So I think a couple of us are in very different places. I think Jim's, the planner's a deal breaker. I think for Council LaJoy, the fire chief is a deal breaker. And for me, the patrol officer is a deal breaker.
And I will remind everyone, we're gonna need five votes.
And that's based on the call trap amendment?
Yes.
And what is that number?
Two point two. And that's on expenditures.
That's on expenditures.
Expenditures only.
We're nowhere close.
We know what the expenditures percentage is.
Two point two, yeah. Yes, two point two is the call trap. Right now, the expenditure side, which includes the school, is four point eight-eight. Because we have to include the school.
So again, just because the state's got its own system for school funding, school budget regardless only requires four votes. But our budget, if we're over the two point two percent, is gonna require five.
Even though that's been driven by the school budget?
Pardon me?
Even though that's been driven a great deal by the school budget?
In part by, and in past years even more, yeah.
So the, the one thing I guess I wanna say is, or I guess find out from folks, is, you know, Councilor Markop is, is uncomfortable with three of these positions. Are the rest of us comfortable with all of these positions if we were to get the additional revenue sharing?
What happens if we get the additional revenue sharing, is that, is that a tax increase? How much of a tax increase is that?
No, if we get additional revenue sharing, it's a decrease.
Then we won't have a, we won't have a tax increase.
Yes, you will. It will still be.
That's the sixty-two cents, that's with the revenue sharing.
Okay, and, and the half, I'm, I'm behind here, but I, I, so half, a half tax increase will mean that with all of these positions, that we do not have a tax increase?
No, we are, we will always have, we, there's no way for us to not have a tax increase at this point.
We will, we will have.
The sixty-two cents means that we're getting two and a half percent revenue sharing, which is a half percent more than what we get now. And it includes all of the positions that we've talked about, that we did the straw poll on at the bottom of the sheet.
And how much of a tax?
And the sixteen cents on the school side.
Sixty-two cents plus, no, no, that includes the sixteen cents on the school side. And if we have a tax increase of, what does sixty-two cents mean, like to?
A hundred and fifty thousand dollar home?
Yeah.
Which is what we always use as the.
Three thousand dollars.
So what's the tax rate on that? What correct tax rate are we using on that?
If we, well, if we use.
Twenty-nine thirty?
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty thousand dollar home?
Yes, please.
Forty-five dollars and forty-two cents?
Uh, per year?
Per year. That's all right to you.
And if we, um.
We'll, we'll let Heather check my math.
With revenue sharing, so with revenue sharing, if we get rid of the, I don't know, some positions here, I, I don't wanna get rid of any of them, but where I am, look at five dollars for something here.
Councilor LaJoy?
What's the homestead? The homestead?
Oh, the homestead is, um.
Might be going up to a hundred percent reimbursement on that.
That's probably, no, that's too high, because it's the homestead.
Like eighteen something.
Homestead's lower. It's in here somewhere.
We should have, like, elevator music.
The state makes, the states makes these calculations difficult. Seventeen thousand six hundred is.
I thought, I thought, I was, I was gonna say eight hundred, seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand six hundred.
I'm getting eighty-two dollars. Eighty, eight hun, uh, eighty-two dollars.
Eighty-two dollars?
We will refine that percentage, because.
Heather says eighty-two dollars.
That is very different.
Yes, yes, I'll do it again.
It's not, we'll, we'll just, we'll just take another minute to confirm.
You guys can talk.
Can we phone a friend, or?
Maybe.
Easiest ways to figure it out. Well, if Heather can't figure it out, we're in deep trouble. Then I'm sure I can.
So, Councilor Markop mentioned a couple, actually, three positions, assistant fire chief, planner, plus one of the patrol officers, is that the, Councilor Markop?
That's where I'm at, yeah.
Which is the increase.
I could live with a reduction in a couple of those, as I mentioned, so.
That's with, Heather is right.
Heather is right, no.
Eighty-two dollars.
It's actually an eighty-two dollar increase, not a forty-five dollar increase.
That's a lot of money.
Yes, it is.
So we're gonna have to pass some decisions to take away.
On the assistant fire chief, I see you have here, re-budget until October first could be one-one also.
Yes.
What's the difference there? So in parentheses, it wouldn't be ninety-two, five, nineteen?
Correct. If we did one-one, you're saving thirty thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
Which is.
Which is just shy of two cents.
Yeah, one and a half, somewhere in there.
I mean, I'm just looking at a way to try to fit that in, that could be a possibility there, but.
Councilor Markop, you all set?
Yeah, I'm sure.
My, my position on that isn't as much the dollars and cents as it is. I don't believe the position is necessary. So that's where I'm standing on that. And as far as trying to figure the tax rate increase, rather than to include homestead, does not everybody uses it, simple math is, on a hundred thousand dollar home, sixty-two dollars. Because it's sixty-two cents. So a hundred and fifty, which I never liked a hundred and fifty, there are probably more properties, the actual assessment is around a hundred thousand, even if they purchased the house for a hundred and fifty. And so, so that'd be ninety-three cents if it was a hundred and fifty. It, no, some people's budgets just, no, can't absorb that.
Maybe we could all volunteer.
So do we have any latitude with the school budget right now? I mean, we have.
You have any, you have as much latitude as you want.
Yeah, I mean, that.
That's not necessarily true. We can't tell them exactly what we want them to cut.
Correct.
We can go back and say, figure it out.
You have, you have control over their total, their budget in its totality, so.
Okay, well, and we're just, right now, we're just assuming the increase, right?
Right now, the, the school committee has voted for a budget that increases the tax rate by sixteen cents. That's the budget that will effectively come before you guys, or you will have to send them a message in advance.
I, I also just wanna mention that we told them when they were here on, what day is it?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, that we weren't gonna have a conversation about the school budget.
Right, we're gonna talk about it next.
So I don't, I do not wanna have that conversation tonight.
Talk about it next Tuesday.
Okay, just, we're assuming that, when you, everyone was saying that's, that out of the sixty-two cents, sixteen cents of that is the, is school.
Correct.
Now the increase.
Correct.
So forty-six is city side, sixteen is school. I'm not suggesting we can do anything with that, but I just wanna know what the assumption is.
Well, we can have that conversation when they come back to us, but.
Yes.
I feel like we made a commitment to them that we weren't going to discuss that budget without them here, and.
Yes, and our thinking was that, that before you, before you sit down and try to make a decision with the school budget, that you at least have some rough idea in your own minds as to where the city budget is gonna end up. Because the two, obviously, at some point do have to come together in the tax bill.
Councilor.
So we did the straw poll to get to this list of positions. Now seeing them and seeing the tax rate information in conjunction with that, in conjunction with that.
Maybe we should go back and do another straw poll.
Makes me feel like I want to do another set of straw polls for each position.
I mean, we did say at the last meeting that, you know.
You needed to see the sticker shot.
Yes, I wanted to see what it was before I could, I was gonna commit to it, okay?
Right.
I personally feel like I'm at that point where I'm like, okay, I could make some decisions.
Okay, so, do, do other people feel like that's?
That sounds fair.
We're gonna go back and do a straw poll on the positions again, which ones we're willing to cut, which ones we're not.
So to, for Council, I'm sorry, for Councilor Lyson's benefit, just so you know, out of all the positions that were listed, in the last straw poll, the ones that are included from line thirty-five to forty-three were the positions that got at least five votes or more. So everything that got below that kind of fell off the radar. So these are the, the straw polls that got that, so.
In not any specific order, but.
Actually, they are. The top one was the city clerks got all seven votes, and it goes on down the line.
But minimum was five.
The minimum was five.
Councilor Petten Gill, sorry.
No, it's all right. So I just wanted to make a comment, and respecting not speaking about the, the school budget, I just wanna say that, you know, like, like Ed said, we do have to come back to it. But over the years, with the rate increase that came out last meeting and the meeting before, the city's done a really good job at managing our side of it. Not counting that sixteen cents in means we have to accommodate that sixteen cents on our side, so it is, it is a large portion of the equation. I, I get not speaking about it since they asked us to. But it is something we gotta keep, you know, in the back of our minds, you know, accommodating that, that raise on their side, too.
So I absolutely agree with that, but I think that we can come up with a Plan A and a Plan B based upon that. So we, we can go through this list and sort of figure out, okay, if we leave it at the sixteen cents, here's, here are the positions we'll fund.
Yeah.
And then when they, if we decide when they come back, that we want them to go back and, and make some changes, what we would add in after that.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate this. I don't feel this happened last year. Last year, I feel it was just like steamrolled right through, and that there was no conversation about reducing it, so I, I appreciate this. And I know the people do, too.
So I assume everybody is all set with adjustments one through thirty-four. Recognizing the transit will only be included in there if Auburn does that. Okay, so we're at least good on that.
I mean, I am, I'm assuming others are, too.
I'd, I'd be in the camp of, of not. It'd be nice to saddle Auburn with their own issues for a change, where, again, we've had to pick up their slack for so many years. I, I don't wanna pay more just because they simply decide to resume service on, on their part.
We don't have a choice in that, though, in some of it.
Technically, though, they don't have a choice in not funding transit, but they've done that for.
Well, but my, my point in us not having a choice is that because, can you do the explanation?
Let me explain, because if, if we decided, if they decide to fund their route restoration, Auburn will, Auburn and Lewiston will be providing about the same route miles in each community. So, and I forget the exact number. But so basically, in terms of route miles, our, our, actually, operating hours, that's the cost driver in the transit system, is how many hours of, of actual bus operations you have in your community. When they cut theirs, the, the ratio went more like sixty, forty, so they ate all of the reduction. If they go back to fifty-fifty and we cut, that cut will then mean, they will look at reducing route miles in Lewiston.
Right.
Because we will be, we will not be paying our fair amount based on hours of actual bus service in the community. And I know it seems unfair. I understand exactly where you're coming from, because we've, we've struggled somewhat with understanding the whole thing ourselves.
Yeah, and I, and I get that. I, I hate, I hate Lewiston being in the position of doing the right thing for the right reasons, because it's the right thing to do, and the other partner at the table decides to do whatever they wanna do. And, and I know that their drop in ridership has hurt the transit system in its own right because of the federal subsidies and everything that, that goes into it. I, I, I hate being the, you know, the city that does the right thing for the right reasons. It's a good thing, but it comes back to bite us. It's a good thing, but it comes back to bite us.
Council Bean.
We just can't afford to do the right thing, I mean, to pick up somebody else's slack. I don't think. It's been a long time, and they keep promising to pay it next year and next year. I don't think we can afford to pay Auburn's lack of full funding. So, the price, the total that's here, fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars, is just Lewiston's share. Is that right?
That is Lewiston's share if Auburn goes, restores the full service. That's the incremental difference to go back to full service. That's our portion of that.
And they will be paying their fair share.
They will be paying their fair share, and this, in order not to have them pay their fair share and us reduce on our side, we would need to come up with this initial money. So, both sides of the river are at full service restored.
Okay, so, if we leave it at fifty-three, seven forty-seven, we're not at full service?
That is full service.
That is full service if Auburn decides to restore their hours.
It's our portion of the full service.
Our portion of the full service.
So, if they decide to keep everything as is, we can eliminate this money. But, right now, in their base budget, they have budgeted restoring to full service. So, we need to increase our budget to reflect that. Because I don't want our budget to be fifty-four thousand dollars in the hole July 1st.
So, for instance, this year, we did not pay fifty-three thousand, or did we? Because Auburn wasn't paying this year.
This year, and I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was something like fifty-six, forty-four. It was allocated based, and it based, pretty much reflected, the hours of actual bus service provided to each community, which in some ways, I think, is potentially a better measure than fifty-fifty. So, because they cut hours, we were paying for our routes, and they were paying for theirs, but they were paying a lesser amount. By increasing hours, they will then be back to fifty-fifty on the hours of service. And because they've been underpaying, because they've been paying less of the amount, we have been getting greater benefit from the federal share. Since we're contributing more, more of the federal money was allocated to us. When they picked up more, that same federal pot, which is actually a little smaller, now has to be split more evenly between the two communities. That's where else a lot of this is coming from. Heather's running numbers.
So, to go back to full service, you're increasing fifteen and a half hours in the system. Right now, the cost share is, from a budgetary standpoint, ignore their increase for contracts. Auburn's paying about a hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Lewiston is paying two hundred and fifty-six thousand. Next year, assuming we keep the fifteen and a half hour reduction, don't go to full service, which is what is in our budget, Lewiston will be paying two hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred, and Auburn would be paying two hundred and seventeen thousand. However, Auburn is looking at funding that fifteen and a half hour differential, taking them to full service or bringing them up to eighty-four and a quarter hours. At that point, we have the exact same funding formula. And that means we're looking at three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars apiece. Our portion of that increase to restore the full service is fifty-three thousand dollars, fifty-three, seven, forty-seven.
And we will be paying for half the budget and receiving half the actual, half the service hours. So, each community will be paying the same amount, and they will be getting the same hours of service.
About forty-two hours.
Well, this is, what I'm going to say is apropos to this, because I just got a call tonight about the service, and it was really awful. Somebody went to the mall, I guess, or, there's a bus that does the mall and all of, and then does Kohl's and those stores. And it took her, like, five hours to get from, when she was done shopping, to get home, essentially. I'm gonna break it and break, it was a lot more convoluted than that, because, you know, we had to, the bus went here, the bus went there, the bus went there, the bus had to stop here. And eventually, she didn't get home till, you know, three or four o'clock this afternoon, having left early in the morning to go shopping. So, it's, we need full service in this town. People need the service, and so that's, yeah, I guess I'd be in favor of leaving it there, hoping that Auburn, that's what they're supposed to do, does the right thing.
And I believe part of the additional service, the restoration of service in Auburn means there's a second bus serving the mall area?
It will actually, the mall shuttle, or mall bus that actually originates or starts in the College Street area would gain additional capacity. We have experienced capacity issues on that, and it is speaking most likely to that story, that there is an issue. And the headways on that currently is over an hour, an hour at least. And so, this would, I believe, reduce it to thirty minutes, which does increase that frequency, and it's the most popular, probably, route that's being used for our residents. So, it's certainly a benefit by doing this. I think it is a benefit from, on the Lewiston side, to gain that additional bus on that.
But if Auburn decides not to fund it, then we take this fifty-three, seven forty-seven out of the budget.
Correct.
So, either way, we're paying for our own full service, or we're not, we're not paying for their service in any way by doing this.
Correct. We will assume that everybody's pretty much all set in the count, in the bond, or in the budget order. There will be a whereas that reflects a reduction if Auburn does not budget that. Okay.
All right, so do we want to go back to the straw poll for the positions?
So, now, we're back to the positions thirty-five through forty-three.
Council LaJoy.
We will take them one at a time.
Council LaJoy's gonna mention...
One at a time. Well, I was gonna ask you, I've been looking at the way you're trying to fill these positions. I agree with the first one, and the reason I agree with the first one, the clerk's, city clerk's position, is because of the elections coming up and so on, and how busy it is and everything. And I was just looking at the other ones and wondering, some of them you have October, December, and May. What if you make them all January? Where would that put us as a final total? And also, my other question would be on the resource officer. It says you could request a school to fund the position year-round.
It's still a tax...
Why don't you go over the logic behind the start dates first?
So, the fire inspector was based upon a 1-1 start date for the rental registration program, and getting him or her onboard prior to that to learn the rules, get the record system up and running, and so forth. Talking to the police chief, he's looking at potentially trying to get a position in the December academy and in the May academy, which is why those dates are listed as such. The senior accountant, getting them onboard, because they're going right into the audit. The mechanic, talking to the public works director of October 1st, that gets them onboard and kind of seasons them in before the winter operations hit. And then, the assistant fire chief, again, talking to the fire chief. The October 1st would be in line with the rental registration program, but it could be delayed till the 1-1. And then, the planner, you know, part of that was looking at filling the position and going through the interview process and so forth. And that seemed like a date that the director of code and planning could adopt as well in discussions with them.
I can see, I can see the patrol officers and the reasoning behind that. I can see the clerks and the fire inspector. I guess the others, I don't see why they couldn't be postponed until January. But that's my feeling, and I don't know what the cost savings would be there if it would be enough to offset not hiring all of them.
And just as a quick reminder, partial year funding this year means full year, full year funding next year, so keep that in mind.
Well, I realize that. Then there'll be full funding next year.
Correct.
So...
That might give us, I'm sorry, that might give us a better opportunity to identify necessary funding. And we don't know what the state's going to be coming out with, either.
So, that would be the senior accountant, the mechanic, the assistant fire chief, and the planner, starting on January 1st. So, since we have Heather and Dale and Dave here, can we ask you all to give us an opinion on whether that will work or not?
I will let Dale and Dave and...
You?
Brian Stockdale go first. Why I crunched some numbers for Council LaJoy.
It looks like Brian's already agreed to that, because it says re-budget and filled October 1st could be 1-1 also.
I still think it would be fair to let him.
Okay. Dale, you're up.
Okay. So, obviously, January 1st is better than July 1st of the following year. So, the logic that Heather laid out is the logic we talked about, but certainly, January 1st, if that works for the council, that works for me.
I would tend to agree with Dale. Certainly, with that position, January 1st would be, would work, would work just fine for me as well.
Great.
I was gonna make a joke and demand July 1st.
I was just like, watch Dave get up here and be like...
Totally unacceptable, no.
No.
No, it's fine, yeah, exactly. I'm just appreciative that you folks were even considering the position, so, and January 1st is not an issue.
And I would echo them. We're all desperate for bodies, so we will take what we can, when we can get it.
Okay.
And I'm almost done.
All right. I'm just trying to, you know, see if we, trying to improve our city, we have to take drastic steps. And some of these items here are the drastic steps that we need to improve our services. And I guess that's my outlook on it, is try to make the city better. And we've lost so much in the last ten, fourteen years, maybe, maybe more, fifteen years, that we've overtaxed some of the individuals that have been taking that load of the work. And in trying to work something out here, I realize I still have the rest of the committee members, you know, to agree with that, if they do. If they don't, that's fine. They have good reasoning as well. And then, you know, I'll just reassess where I'm going. But I just thought it was something to come out with, to try to work something out.
So, yes, so if we look at the senior staff accountant, the mechanic, the assistant fire chief, and the planner, all starting at 1-1, you're looking at approximately a seventy-nine thousand dollar reduction, or about four cents.
Council Mike?
Yes. I just want to let you know, I, I'm, the strength of the position, you know, wanting to see it added and getting it added on 1-1 is important. I think I would, I would take that as a compromise. And I, in fact, with Council LaJoy, was thinking along the same lines of like starting, but, I mean, these are positions that will be carried up through next year. But these are the, you know, I talked about boots on the ground. There are a lot of boots-on-the-ground positions here that we're funding, and that's really a big part of what's necessary. And you do have overall picture, vision, a leadership in our departments, which is critical, but you also need those boots on the ground with police and fire, and knowing the clerk's office and even finance, how they put up with the staffing shortfalls. I think it's time, and I think the service brought to our community will be worth it. Thank you.
Council Markhart.
Boots on the ground, frontline people. Administration is not. I still object to the assistant fire chief. I'd be more interested in planner than assistant fire chief, although I'm not a fan of it either, not at this time, particularly because, just like we've heard, it will be a fully, full impact to the budget next year. We don't know what the economy's gonna bring next year and the year after. I'm not sure that a January 1st is a real compromise. Listening to the rationale behind the start dates, they all made sense. I mean, when I think about senior accountant, starting on July 1st, and especially since we still don't have a payroll person?
Yes, she's about six weeks into the job.
Okay.
A long timer.
Yes.
So, not, that makes me rethink that position. The mechanic, starting on October 1st, to get ahead of the winter season, especially since two mechanics were requested and we're down to one, and there's no service on that person as well, and looking at the base salary, I think the private sector pays better in some of these instances than the municipality. So, although I didn't support the mechanic last time, and I'd be reluctant to support it this time, based on my concerns with the budget, the start times make sense. Playing with the start time just to save seventy-nine thousand does not make sense, particularly since we'll have the full impact of all these positions in the following fiscal year.
So, I, I appreciate us trying to look at those start dates, but I do tend to agree with Councilor Markhart in terms of, you know, the start date's making sense. I mean, the one that I feel like could be, the start date could be put off was the planner. Well, the fire chief, obviously, but that's already built in there. Just because I feel like the mechanic, like he said, getting ready for winter operations is important, and the senior accountant getting ready for the audit also, I mean, those are two pretty significant events for municipal government. So, I mean, I still think we're back to the straw poll on the positions.
Okay.
I mean, do others agree with that?
Can I just say, yeah, yeah. I'm wondering about the fourth school resource officer. That would be like an informal request to the school committee, because we, as a council, cannot tell them.
Correct.
We can't say, take seventeen K more, and you know where it goes.
No, but we can say, we're not funding that seventeen K.
Exactly. That's how we're doing it.
I was like, how would this work?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We will only do it if you.
Can't do that.
So...
And I also just want to add, we talked about the city clerk's position and the upcoming elections. That position is also critical to the rental registration program, so I just want to make sure we're keeping that in mind as we go through this list.
So, the city clerk's position. The straw poll.
Yeah.
What does, how many do we, I just don't know what it's gonna mean in the end.
Well, we're gonna see how many people put their hands up for each of the positions. So, figure out which ones you might be comfortable cutting, and then we're gonna see where we are in terms of votes. If you're not comfortable cutting any of them, then put your hand up for every one of them.
Madam Mayor, you made, people made a case for their own, some positions, and the planner position, I think, is critical to the rental registration, in my opinion. I think that staffing of that position will help a number of programs within planning, including the comp plan, but also the rental registration.
Okay, but it wasn't included in the, we talked about the rental registration program.
Not in the first year request, that's correct. But it was in the budget this year.
So, was the assistant fire chief's position?
City clerk position. Fire inspector. One patrol officer. Two patrol officers. The school resource officer. The senior accountant. The mechanic. The assistant fire chief. The planner. Okay. I got my marching orders.
Can you tell us what they are?
So it looks like if we look at the majority votes, the city clerk's position, the fire inspector's position, one patrol officer, the school resource officer, the staff account, or the senior accountant and the mechanic, all have, and the assistant fire chief all have five votes. So we would be.
Five or more.
We would be eliminating one patrol officer and the planner at this juncture.
Can you tell us how many votes the second patrol officer and the planner each got?
Three.
So that's 80,000?
I, can I?
Yes.
It's, it's, it's workable.
Okay.
So I guess the second question, go ahead.
What we'll, what we'll do is we'll try to push this all back together into a package. So you can see exactly where things stand and get that out to you before next Tuesday's meeting.
Correct.
Counselor, sorry, one quick thing. So on the fire chief, we're going to go with the January 1st start date though?
Correct.
Okay. And everything else, okay. Counselor.
Just a question because I feel like we're looking at these positions as if they already have a person in them. Would it be?
Can you talk about what you mean by that?
Yeah, I like, I, I think some people may be looking at it as though the person's here and we're like voting whether or not they get to keep the job and they're looking at it. No, 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 I know that, I know that we're not, but I'm just saying, would it be easier if we came up with a total dollar amount that we were easier or in agreement with spending and then build to that with positions?
I mean, I don't, personally, I don't know how that would work.
I think it would be up to have more clarity. If we start out with where we want to be, where we want to be in the budget in these positions.
Yeah, because like we.
I don't understand that.
Well, because we, we took a straw poll and we ended up with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine positions. And then we cut two. Like I, I feel like if we keep doing straw polls, we're going to end up with seven positions that some people are okay with, some people aren't. Like I'm, the, the planner, the planner is a big deal for me, as is the, the fire chief. I know everybody else is in almost complete opposition to that. I, I don't know if we're going to get to a workable, a workable position on it going the route we're going.
But at the end, you're still going to be, you're still going to want there to be a planner and a fire chief.
No, I, I'm agreeable, but I, I don't know if we can get there, if we can get there.
Where do we want?
I guess I still don't underst, I still don't understand because if, if you're advocating for the fire chief and the planner, regardless of whether we decide an amount or not, you're still going to want a fire chief and a planner because the point is to have a fire chief and a planner, not.
No, I, I get it, but I feel like we're aimlessly, you know, meandering towards a goal as opposed to just saying, this is our, our target. Let's go, go here. I, I guess I'd rather it be a more efficient process, I guess is where, where I'm going with it. It's, I feel it's going to take us a while to get there.
I mean, my goal, and I can't speak for others, is to get to as low of a tax rate as we, property tax increase as we can, meeting the needs that I think we need to meet. So in looking at this list of positions, the two that I didn't put my hand up for were ones that I felt like we did not need to incorporate in this budget. I don't, I don't know how other people came to that conclusion. I would say that if we did the straw poll again right now, that my hand would go up for the same things. Yeah. Counselor.
I think the kind of two iterations of straw polls for me were, one, what did I feel like were priorities? And then what was the implication of those priorities was lined out, laid out tonight? And could I live with that implication or not? And I decided I couldn't, so I kept my hand down for certain ones. I don't think we're going to keep straw polling. If we are, then I agree, that does feel aimless. But I feel like we've seen the numbers fully flushed out. Some conversations have happened where compromise on start dates so that the full impact is not felt in this budget year when we might have, you know, a school increase or not. So it's just trying to get a whole picture. I feel comfortable with the removal of those two positions that didn't get up by person majority. I think I'll be comfortable with where the tax rate comes out at that point. And then, of course, you all will discuss the school budget on Tuesday and see if you're comfortable with the implications on the city side matched up with that. So that, that's where I sit right now. I feel good on both sides personally, having participated.
I mean, I guess what I want to see is, is where the elimination of those two position gets us in the tax rate increase.
Yeah.
And then that would give us more clarity, to your point.
Well, and then that's, that's why I asked about the dollar goal because those are, that doesn't save us that much. You know, I know the, the fire chief or the assistant fire chief is one of the larger positions on there. You know, so if that one fell off in addition to the other two, then we're talking some real, you know, value added back to it. But, you know, like the, the patrol officer, I'd assume we'd cut the $11,000 one. So that, that doesn't add that much back to it.
So, chief.
Is the school resource officer?
No, the 11,000 is May 1st start date.
Oh, okay.
So on the patrol officers, just to clarify that point, would that be based upon whether or not, like, we would aim to hire one in the earlier class, but there's no guarantees that that would happen. So it could be the person in May.
Brian?
Brian's nodding back there.
That's what I thought. We had talked about that.
Yes, that's correct. I mean, my goal would be to send somebody to the December academy and then send somebody to the May academy. But the realities are, if I can't find somebody qualified to send December, I'd have to send two in May. Or, I mean, depends on what you fund or maybe just one in May.
But in terms of budgeting, we should budget for the 39. Is that correct, Heather?
Mm-hmm. That would be the goal because it would save in overtime and whatnot. So if I've done the math right, if I eliminate the planning position and the, the May 1st patrol officer, and I take the assistant fire chief with a 1-1 start date and a mechanic with a 1-1 start date and a senior accountant with 1-1 start date, I am loosely looking at 137,000 or 7 cents. And if you guys talk some more, I can double check those numbers.
So that puts us at 55 cents.
Yes.
Counselor.
Yeah, I'm going to have to check the video, but I, I, for some reason, remember the assistant fire chief not getting five votes in the first straw poll. I mean, it must have been that. These are all five votes and I wonder where, like the planner, you know, the reasons why the planner eroded a couple of votes.
I think both Ed and Heather kept track of the totals and they both had five votes on the fire chief. Is that correct?
And this time I did not look up to see how anybody was voting. That was one of the things I chose to do myself. So I, I don't know who voted or whatever, so.
So.
You said 58 cents?
55.
55 cents. And where does that leave us as far as per household income?
For a 100K house, it would be 55 dollars.
If, oh, they, it goes like.
Without the homestead.
Yeah, based on 100,000 dollar value.
55, oh, okay, thank you. I've only been at this for. So it'd be 55 dollars.
It's easier to just ask Heather to do the math.
55 dollars per year.
What's the paper going to use when they say the tax rate's increasing and losing based upon the value of a certain house?
They probably will use, I think they, I think they use 150, but I usually give them the increase based on a couple of different assessed values.
Okay.
And including the homestead.
And include the homestead, yes.
So on the city side, that would be 39 cents. Just.
Loosely.
55 minus 16.
Yes.
Pretty good, yeah.
Thank God I have my calculator right here.
Continue your head.
And I'll just remind everybody, this is not necessarily the signing, signing the budget on the dotted line at this point. This is just giving us the information we need to come back to you with where things stand.
I'm good with 55 cents.
So from here, you're going to go back and create a third version of this?
Yes.
She said, she said less than excitedly.
And, and it'll be a different color so we can track it on a different colored paper.
Just, just no red or green.
No.
Merry Christmas.
So does that get to a little bit of what you were asking for, Counselor Pattonville?
Sort of.
Okay. We can talk more about it next week.
I'm agreeable to that.
Okay.
We might have more clarity after we get the.
Counsel. Counselor Markhart.
What about the programs that were in that original listing?
The new programs and service listing? We are going to discuss that as well as the fund balance items now, just to make sure everybody's all set with that. And then the LCIP, kind of where it stands right now, which is the sheet I just passed out. So we might as well hit the new program and service sheet right now, which is on page 18 of your budget.
Game change.
18. But don't lose this packet too far. Don't move this packet too far. Thank you. So the non-personal new programs and service include the employee appreciation event at $3,000. It includes the tablets for the building maintenance at $6,800.
I'm sorry, this is what you've already, what you've included in the?
No, these are the items that have not been included anywhere.
Okay.
Just to make sure everybody's all set with that. The tablets for the code enforcement officers are in the second iteration. So we'll skip that.
Those are included, okay.
Yes. Parking garage management has not been included anywhere. The aerial photography scanning for code enforcement has not been included anywhere. The five contract plow units with drivers have not been incorporated.
Vehicles for code.
And the vehicles for code has not been incorporated. And that's it.
Aquatics, the general fund?
That's labor. I'm only doing that labor.
Okay, that's right.
So the recreation programmer, the programming aide and the library technician, those aren't?
Those did not score high on the first thing. These were the non-personnel things that we needed to revisit.
Counselor Ray.
And these are because you can't fund them through fund balance?
That's correct.
Because you've already spent all of the fund balance allow or?
The only item, let me say this.
You're on the bottom of your fund balance list.
The, yes, the, the tablets would be eligible for the building maintenance. The assistant chief vehicle would be eligible. The code enforcement vehicles would be eligible. The aerial photography would be eligible because that's getting them up to current.
Can I ask you one question? So the tablets for the code tablets, those can also come out of fund balance?
Yes, but, and they are part of, that's part of the second iteration.
Okay. So.
So essentially the.
Employee appreciation event can't be fund balance?
No. That's a dinner.
Okay.
Essentially, or a barbecue or T-shirts or something like that.
Okay.
So if we end up not funding the tablets and software for code enforcement, does that impact back on the expenditure?
Okay, put that one off to the parking, in the parking lot for now. Okay. Because when we get to the next list, you'll see I've included it.
Counselor Markhart, sorry. Thank you.
What you just said about the tablets and software for code enforcement is the same for the assistant fire chief's vehicle?
No, I am not looking at, because they have, I wouldn't necessarily call it an extra vehicle, but talking to the chief, that vehicle can wait until the 21 budget.
So that's not on any list.
That's not on any iteration.
Even though you said it was eligible.
It's eligible, but not on any list. It was answering Counselor Ray's question.
And these items not being on any list means that they would increase the mill rates that we've been discussing.
That would be true.
So just to clarify, items that would affect the property tax increase that we've been talking about are the employee appreciation event, parking garage management, five contracted plow units with drivers. And that's it.
Correct.
Is it aerial photography?
No, we can do fund balance.
So one, more or less one-time expenditure?
So the one item that I would consider adding back in is the employee appreciation event. But I don't know. Others should.
I'd agree with that.
Which leads us to our new and improved fund balance list.
The page is at, is that?
That's back into your packet.
Yeah, the wood page.
It starts on the third page. I guess the first question, I know we had talked about council having the chance to kind of review the items that were presented about the city, or with the city administrators of budget. Going through there, you will notice there's a new column that has deferred. Some of the items, we have slid over into the deferred column that we would, you know, potentially reevaluate for next year. That includes the first floor renovations down in the mailroom primarily and the city council wing or the city administrator wing. Two writing stations on the second floor. The part of the improvements in the violations bureau included a vehicle access and an impound lot for 52,000. We are looking at phasing that in in 2021. The digital archiving of historical property fire files, we're looking at funding that over a two-year period. And then the replacement of the LAP or the lap fence. The school did not put their portion in the budget, so we are going to defer that and hopefully both of us will re-budget it next year. And then the final replacement of tree lights and new decor for the downtown plaza there for 12,000 on the second page. Once again, on the travel lane, or the bus lane, the retaining wall at the armory, again, the school did not budget their portion, so we'd rather give them the opportunity to budget for that, so that's been moved to twenty twenty one, or suggested. And then, looking at the carpet on the first floor in the library, um, it provides them, we're looking at splitting it over two years, but also providing them a way to kind of reevaluate that, to see if, because the lion's share of that cost was moving the bookshelves, is to see if there's a more economic way of doing that with carpet tiles or so forth. If not, we would do it over a, a two-year period. So, we have moved a hundred and sixty two thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars out of the fund balance recommendation. That was initially proposed to the council in the city administrators' document. We are looking at adding the following projects. The tablets and software for the code enforcement. The marketing campaign, I'm moving that from the LCIP to here, because technically it's probably more appropriate in fund balance rather than a bonded project. Looking at the parking garage and parking initiatives, again, that's moving that from the LCIP to this at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And actually, all the rest of those items are taking from the LCI, LCIP and moving over. So what we would be doing is spending three million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars from fund balance. Our sweet spot has always been ten percent. We are looking at nine point nine three percent after funding all of this. So we're about ninety-four thousand dollars over the ten, ten percent sweet. Over.
Over, okay.
Ten percent sweet spot.
Um, can I just ask, the parking and garage initiative, can you just remind us what that is?
That includes the presentation that the consultant just made to you not too long ago.
Cleaning up the garages and?
No, it's more of the parking meters and things like that, that presentation. The cleaning up the garages would either be city staff, or it would be, um, the managed, property management company that was part of the new program and service.
Right, which we.
Which you did not.
Just said we didn't want to fund.
Correct.
What I would, what I would strongly suggest is if we go ahead with the parking meters, we consider designating, um, the revenue increases that come from those parking meters to, to segregate that out, so that we might eventually build up enough money to either continue to invest in upgrading our parking meters and/or to bring in a parking management company. As I know not everyone would agree with this, but I'm pretty much convinced that if we brought in a company after the first year or two, we would see revenue increases that would offset the cost, more than offset the cost of the, of the management company.
That was my question about revenue, the revenue component there, thank you.
Councilor Ray?
So, the moved from the LCIP, the one hundred and twenty-five day for parking and garage initiative is for the meters, but no one would be managing the meters?
It would still be part of the city staff responsibility. The garage and the meters.
Managing them now would be managing them.
Oh, there's a person managing them now?
These, these are the on-street meters, not meter, anything in the parking garages. So this is just replacing and upgrading the current coin-operated meters.
Okay.
With a more.
And that's parking enforcement through the place?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? Councilor Lee?
Yeah, um, I'd like to see us try to get back to that sweet spot of ten percent. I know nine point nine three is very close, but we're still talking, what did you say?
It's just shy of a hundred thousand, ninety-five thousand bucks, yep.
So, can I just say that we've had a sweet spot of ten percent? And we've always said, we're gonna try and keep it at ten percent, but somehow magically we always end up above the ten percent.
That's partially.
Because Heather's amazing.
That's partially, but it's also partially because of timing. We're, we're looking at that against year-end last year.
Correct.
So, so we're, the number we're using for fund balance is, the fund balance has of six thirty?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. So, we'll, we'll use, we, we use that amount, and then in this year, we will hopefully come in positively again on revenues and expenditures, and that pumps that ten percent back up.
Right, I, my point was, I'm personally uncomfortable with us dipping below that with a point oh seven percent, because in the past, we've always maintained above the ten percent, even though we set the ten percent as a sweet spot.
The one caution I will, I will always lay out there for folks is someday the economy will.
And the ten percent is also not an official ten percent. I mean, we've had people on this council who were happy to go to eight percent.
That's true.
Councilor Markoff?
And, just like you just said, um, we don't know where the economy will go. We're not guaranteed to see a twelve point nine four as a beginning number to do the same sort of list all over again. We could be handcuffed to be able to do as much as we're doing here.
That's correct, although I think, um, we have tried to do some catch-up over stuff that was deferred for a three or four-year period after the recession. So hopefully we've made some progress. I can't tell you that other stuff isn't gonna come along that's gonna add to it in the future, though. You know, if we were back in two thousand and ten, uh, most of those items on that list wouldn't be funded.
Councilor Markoff?
Just wondering, what does the technology at six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars pay for?
I know it includes the tax upgrade. It includes, um, at least one server, as I'm looking for the page. Okay, so the, the lion's share of that is made up of three things. One is the tax software upgrade, the other one is the dark fiber network, and then there is the additional storage unit for scanning and documenting, um, the system. And those three pieces total four hundred and fourteen of the six hundred and forty-two. We have a, a bunch of little projects, including, um, the VM host software, that's in, in the lights, end of life. We have core and switches, you know, most of these things are very meaningful to me, so I'm probably the wrong person to ask. And then we have the same core and switch issues also at the library. So both of those are running about thirty-six to fifty-six thousand dollars. And then looking at updating the public works and the Dingle building core switch, that's a minor amount of three thousand dollars. The reason why I'm suggesting moving the technology from the LCIP to the fund balance, 'cause realistically, right now, you probably should not be amortizing technology more than three years. And at that point, it's extremely expensive, but, you know, it's outdated so quickly that it's hard to have, you know, if you do a ten, fifteen-year bond on that stuff, you're gonna have a lot of bond left without these items still in your inventory.
Hey Heather?
Yep.
Councilor Ray and I are wondering what crowd control units for treasury are.
It's only seven hundred dollars, but what?
Right, it's the stanchions in front of the office, so they can kind of line that.
Get in a line, okay.
Yes.
That's a bold statement, crowd control?
That was not Heather Hunter's terminology, that was our building maintenance terminology. I kind of chuckled too, I'm like, I'm gonna leave that there.
So, on the technology things of, there's, there's no chance of phasing as far as?
What I would potentially look at, um, just based upon the turnover, one of the things that we potentially could push off a year, and that we've done it a couple of years, and at some point, we're not going to be able to do that, is the tax software. That is gonna be a good two-year project. Most tax software is highly customized based upon the letters that you need to produce under, um, state law, um, the tax bills that you need to produce, making sure that all the calculations. Our tax, the current tax software that we're using now, although it's been upgraded, has been the same software since I started here, almost thirty years ago. The city probably, maybe twenty years ago, twenty to twenty-five years ago, tried to actually convert at that point in time. It was an eighteen-month project. At that point, due to the number of mods and the inaccuracies of the software, um, the department at that point in time abandoned the project and walked away. Because it is just so very, very individualized, it has to talk to your assessing program. In our particular case, it would need to talk to our accounting system. This is not an easy project to undertake, especially with new employees. So that would be something that I would be willing to push off, knowing at some point, it's gonna sunset and we're not gonna be able to upgrade it.
Councilor Markoff?
Is there a certain product that you're looking at?
Um, right now, based upon our assessing software and our, essentially our enterprise system that we're using for fund accounting and so forth, we would stick with the Tyler Technology Munis program.
And the price tag?
They have budgeted, and I just lost that page, I think it was. Happens when you're talking. So we are budgeting a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. My guess is that's probably the first phase of it. I would probably guess we're gonna need at least another fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars in year two, just to do all of the final form modifications, additional training, getting it online, and doing the bridges that are now, even though it's the same company, they still need bridges to their own software.
So Tyler takes care of the accounting software?
Tyler, right now Tyler Technology, and we're using the Munis portion of Tyler Technology. Right now, we have utility billing on it, we have accounting, fund accounting on it, which includes requisitions, purchasing, um, budgeting, AP, HR, payroll, inventory, we have the work order system, and, uh, the capital assets. And the school shares that software with us. So they are billed a portion, they were billed a portion of the debt service, they're also billed a portion of the annual maintenance fees, and so the budget reflects that credit.
Are they, uh, Windows-based?
Yes.
Microsoft?
Yep. And it, I mean, there's pros and cons to this. I mean, Ed and I have argued about this software since we started this implementation process, that from the frontline standpoint, it is very, very cumbersome. There's a lot of different clicks and fields and everything that you need to do. From an extract, data extraction standpoint, it is probably right up there, top shelf. Dumping it into Excel, pulling data out, um, the document scanning now, pretty, and that's why we need the additional storage capacity. We keep very little paper files anymore, and we're looking at it from, not only that, but the employee files as well as AP invoices, all of that is now scanned into the system.
Double backup, off-site backup?
Yep.
May I also?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, a hundred and sixty-five thousand sounds like the software that doesn't include all of the consulting work that would need to go into it.
Typically, when we've done it, we don't do consulting, other than the training that they provide us. We do it in-house.
Because I'm, I'm familiar with a company called Tri-Bridge that maintains a Microsoft product, uh, called Great Plains, and it can do all those integration things, but we don't use half of those portals because the additional costs, the additional, uh, work and effort that would have to go into it. So we have a lot of off, uh, off-the-main-system things to do, the other journals.
Correct.
Councilor Lee?
Thank you. Was your response about that, um, that you're already phasing in, or, I mean, you could phase in the, um, the assessing, is it the assessing package that's the biggest?
Assessing package is already live, but we are running two assessing packages in tandem. We do one from assessing side, and then we use the old system to be able to generate the tax bills.
So I guess, on the technology piece, there, there's a, there's a way of, of offsetting that to another, another next tax year, some of it?
I would be comfortable in, in delaying this one year.
Okay.
So that would reduce that six hundred and forty-two thousand dollar and get us back up over the ten percent threshold.
Well, it wouldn't help us doing half of that, because we only need ninety-six to do the ten percent, right?
It, to, we really need to kind of start with the whole thing, because we're paying for the contract, yep.
Other questions or comments? All right, so Tuesday.
One more piece.
Oh.
The different colored one, I bet, just packed up.
Pretty colored.
Yes.
And this, we don't have to spend a whole lot of time on tonight, because I'm sure we'll come back to it later.
Right, it just kind of particularly, particularly gives you where we are standing on the LCIP, now that we've moved some of those items to fund balance. So this also includes, um, the latest and greatest from the school department, reducing the city, uh, system-wide camera system from nine hundred and fourteen thousand down to the two thirty-eight that the superintendent presented on Tuesday night.
I'm sorry, where are we on, okay, down, okay.
Under school.
Under school. So right now, um, as presented, removing, making those adjustments, and then using other funding source, are moving to fund balance. The LCIP that's applicable to the eighty percent limit is now at ten million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars, or three point five million dollars over the eighty percent limit. I will highlight, though, we have added back the Sabata Street fire station, the fire station, the two million dollar gap that we've been talking about, that is bolted up above there. So we are now looking at, are incorporating that in the bond package to move forward with that.
And we are sincerely hoping that's sufficient.
Last year, um, I might remind you, as far as the LCIP goes, um, we did not have enough votes for the eighty percent rule, but there was a comfort level in getting at a hundred percent of the three-year average. So you will note, the footnote down at the bottom, the hundred percent of the three-year average is eight million, eight fifty, or eight fifty-seven, five fifty-five. So essentially, if you apply the eighty percent, you're dropping that down to the seven million. So if we use the same logic that we applied to the FY nineteen LCIP, we're one point seven million dollars over that limit, or that amount. And again, that's pretty much our Sabata Street Fire Station increase.
And do we know what that percentage is?
I'm sorry?
And do we know what that percentage is? Hundred and five percent, hundred and ten, hundred and twenty?
Over the eighty percent or the hundred percent?
Over the hundred.
It would be a hundred percent.
It would be a hundred and X percent, a hundred and twenty, the, the number we're at now compared to the seven million.
Oh, 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 yes, yes.
Is a hundred and what percent?
Hang on, ten minutes. I know, that's why I bring my calculator. I have to bring my gray glasses, too. Um, a hundred, uh, just shy of a hundred and twenty percent.
I can hold a paper for you. We got to go to the school wing bond issue.
Yep.
I also want to update you, we had had a discussion Tuesday about how the school wing would work in terms of bonding it and having the referendum, and I will fess up that I misled you, and Heather went back and did some research the last time we went through this process, and I'll let her explain how this process is going to have to work.
So I will preface this and say that it defies logical order.
Great.
Which is where we kind of got into...
It's business as usual.
Exactly. So what bond counsel is saying, and they kind of have let us do it the logical way in the past, but we happened to have our normal bond counsel on vacation the last time we had something, and the new one, I think, aged Ed and I about 10 years over a weekend because they wanted everything to stop, they wanted to go back out. So we now have kind of, regardless of who we get from a bond counsel, this is the order that would need to take. So what I would recommend is doing the normal LCIP vote by itself with the normal municipal projects. And then what we need to do is actually vote on the school project before it goes to referendum. I did not say it was logical, I'm just telling you what... And there, it's kind of, in their eyes, if the council or the administrative body is not in favor of the project, why would you take it to referendum? However, from your standpoint, you're probably thinking, if the public doesn't want it, why would we vote?
Right.
So what we talked about is we will do it in the right order. So we will take the project, we will vote on it with two caveats, obviously subject to passing the referendum, and if it does not pass, it automatically rescends the bond so we don't have to come back to counsel to do a two-step process. And she is recommending doing the entire authorization at once.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Not the 800 and the 12-point, whatever it is, do the whole 13 million all at once. Because when you go to the referendum vote, you will need the whole 13 million in the vote.
Yep, whole amount has to be approved at referendum.
Your council, though, should tie to the referendum vote.
That was what we did with the middle school. We had to authorize the entire amount in advance, and then we actually bonded it over two or three years.
Correct, based upon cash flow.
Counselor Ray? So in terms of timing, we would have the council vote during this budget process, but then the referendum would not come until November?
Correct.
Correct.
And would we vote for the referendum at a later time, closer to the November, to send it?
Send it to referendum? That would be...
Kathy, how far in advance do they need to vote before, for the election for that?
Right, as far as the election, we need to have absentee ballots available 30 days prior to at a minimum, and then we need to allow several weeks to a month for the printing and distribution of the absentee ballot. So nomination papers are always due the Friday of Labor Day weekend, so that's usually our cutoff for anything that goes on the ballot.
So I guess the question is, though, Kathy, when they approve the bond order, can they approve sending it to referendum at that same timeframe?
I think that's fine. That might be more of a question, Heather, for the bond counsel, but in my opinion...
For the bond counsel, they're fine.
Okay, and that doesn't really impact elections one way or the other, so that'd be fine in that sense.
Okay.
Other comments or questions?
I don't have any.
From the council. So Tuesday...
Tuesday, we will come back with obviously an update of where things stand on our side, and the school department will be here so that you will have the opportunity to look at both where we are and where they are and see if you want to provide any direction to the school department as to whether their proposal is acceptable or not.
All set? And we'll conclude our workshop.